Seeing six oh one, I'd like to call the November first two thousand twenty-three regular meeting of the Kenai City Council order and ask if you are available or able to please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
... to defy of the United States of America, the Republic, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Clerk, please call her all.
Vice Mayor Basen.
Here.
Councilmember Askin.
Here.
Mayor Gabriel.
Here.
Councilmember Daniel.
Here.
Councilmember Sonar.
Here.
Councilmember Naxted.
Here.
Councilmember Dorfitt.
Here.
And student representative Tanner is absent. Do you have a quorum?
Thank you, ma'am clerk. Counsel, before we get to agenda approval, I'd like to call your attention to a laydown you should have in front of you with requested additions to the packet. Action add to item E one ordinance number three three seven five dash twenty twenty-three Kenai's Indian Tribe donation replacement letter requested by administration. Action add to item E four resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash sixty-three two thousand twenty-two Upper Cook Inlet Salmon Season summary, Upper Cook Inlet Commercial Fisheries Annual Management Report two thousand twenty-one, and E site set net closure report requested by councilmember Dorfitt. My pleasure, counsel vice mayor Basen.
Is that item H four?
Yes, H four.
Yeah, I would like to add agenda item H four to the consent agenda.
Thank you. Well, let's we'd like to get to let's start with councilmember Naxted with a general approval.
We're in the wrong we're in the wrong spot.
Yeah, we need to approve the agenda and consent agenda first, and then we'll do as part of the amendment.
May I name the consent?
Hello, student representative note that student representative Tanner has joined us. We're going to reset here anyway, Vice Mayor Basen, because I just realized that we have the election of the vice mayor ahead of agenda approval. So with that, we'll go to election of vice mayor, and with that, I'll open up to nominations from the floor. I see councilmember Askin has her hand up. Councilmember Askin.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Henry Naxted as vice mayor, and I'd like to move that nomination cease.
Thank you. Does that need to be seconded? No, okay. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Well, that might make that pretty easy since seeing no other nominations from the floor than and without objection from the body, I see that councilmember Naxted is our new vice mayor.
Thank you very much.
Now, with that, we'll go to approval of agenda and consent agenda, Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, mayor. I move for approval of the agenda and consent agenda along with the two action items, item E one and E four, and requesting unanimous consent.
For a second.
Second.
Is there anybody from the body that'd like to amend the consent agenda or consent agenda at this time, Vice or councilmember Basen?
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to add agenda item H four to the consent agenda. That's unanimous.
Unanimous consent was requested. There's any objection? So what we're doing here, I see some looks here, that everything under the consent agenda has an asterisk by it. That asterisk under item H four was omitted, so that would just essentially make that part of the consent agenda. Okay. Unanimous consent was requested for that amendment. Is there any objection? Being known the consent agenda is approved as amended, is there any other proposed amendments from the body for the agenda or consent agenda? Being none, I'd like to ask the clerk to please, the deputy clerk, please read the consent agenda into the record.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. You have approval of the regular meeting minutes of October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. You have new business action approval bills to be ratified, brought to you by the administration. You have action approval purchase orders and purchase order amendments requiring council approval in accordance with KMC seven point fifteen point oh two oh brought to you by the administration. You have action approval confirmation of mayoral nominations for a partial term appointment to the Harbor Commission brought to you by Mayor Gabriel. You have action approval letter of support for the Kenai Peninsula Housing Initiatives Inc. grant application to develop senior and low income housing brought to you by the administration. You have ordinance number thirty-three seventy-seven dash twenty twenty-three, accepting and appropriating an increase in the Title III grant from the State of Alaska Department of Health and Social Services for Nutrition, Transportation, and Support Services, and an American Rescue Plan Act grant passed through the State of Alaska Department of Health and Social Services for Kenai Senior Center expenditures in support of its response to the COVID-nineteenth public health emergency, brought to you by the administration, public hearing November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. You have ordinance number thirty-three seventy-eight dash two thousand twenty-three, accepting and appropriating a donation from Health Corp Energy Company to assist with the annual area-wide senior Thanksgiving dinner brought to you by the administration, public hearing November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. You have ordinance number thirty-three seventy-nine dash two thousand twenty-three, accepting and appropriating a grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security passed through the State of Alaska Department of Military and Veterans Affairs for the purchase of trauma care supplies brought to you by the administration, public hearing November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And you have ordinance number thirty-three eighty dash two thousand twenty-three, amending Kenai Municipal Code twenty-two point oh five point oh nine five methods of sale or disposal to provide a veteran's land purchase price discount for certain residential land purchases brought to you by councilmember Basen, public hearing November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Timbano. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to any item that is on a consent agenda which was just written in the record? Anybody online? And I would say that for those joining through Zoom, if you'd like to raise your hand, if you join through the app, press the raise your hand button if you'd like to be like to comment. If you joined by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody online? And with that, we'll bring back counsel unanimous consent was requested on agenda and consent agenda approval. Is there any objection? Being none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved. That brings us to item, we have we have no scheduled administrative reports this evening, so on our item C on our agenda, we have scheduled public comment, Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District Quarterly Update, Tim Dillon, Executive Director, and I see he brought Ms. Cameron with you too, so.
Yeah, thank you for letting me come and speak tonight. I actually have with me Cassidy Cameron. Some of you probably remember her back when she was with Seldovia as the as the city manager. I'm going to do part of the presentation, and then she's going to do the the second half. Just a reminder, you know, yeah, we're based here in Kenai, but we have a rather large area that we try and help in around the size of the state of West Virginia. So we've been very, very busy with a lot of different things. One of the one of our successes that we really feel good about is it's always nice when you not really kick somebody out, but help them move on. And the driving school, which had been with us for five years and now has their own property in a great new facility down the end of Wildwood, so that opens up a couple of offices. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention if anybody has any interest. We've had a variety of people already that have approached us, so we will continue to take a hard look at that and figure out who we're going to replace the driving school with. As you all know, our biggest thing is quality of life. When we start looking at projects and how we can assist, it all comes back to quality of life. We have five major areas that we're always concerned about, and when somebody brings us something, we look at this and see, does it involve technology and communication, workforce and human capital, infrastructure and land use, business capital and entrepreneurship, or regional partnerships? And if we can't fit it into one of these five, then what we do is we assist that organization on who can help them and open up those doors for them. As far as a community update right now, you know, there's lots of things going on. As most of you know, there's there's all sorts of dollars that are out there right now. The key is making sure that you can fulfill what the federal government or the state government or whoever's the granting agency is, making sure that you can give them what they what they expect. But just, you know, a handful of things, you know, we have in Cooper Landing, we're in the middle of trying to help them get a new snow groomer. We are in discussions right now with the DOT to handle their outreach here on the Kenai Peninsula, which would put a layer in between the DOT and communities, whether it be incorporated or unincorporated communities. And our goal and where our discussions are right now is we don't want to just be something that you check the box. We want to make sure that if the city of Kenai has concerns about something that's going on, that when we sit down, that we're able to actually talk to the people from DOT that are making those decisions and understand why the answer is yes or no. So we're working on that right now. We have been notified by the the Department of Energy from the feds about a title project that we're a finalist for with one of our partners on the East Coast. So the Department of Energy will be coming to visit us here at the end of November. We also were heavily involved in the Cook Inlet Regional Citizens Advisory Council recertification, and we're very, very happy to see where we are with the whole bluff erosion project. Some of you may not know, but we played a big role behind the scenes with trying to make sure that we got the funding for that and how it was was put together with that. On the borough side of things, if you look at workforce as being a three-legged stool, in order for us to fix workforce, transportation, housing, and childcare are three major issues that we are trying to help with all across the Kenai Peninsula. Everybody has it to one level or another, and there's no one size fits all as far as a fix, but we're trying to assist with that. Along with that, just a couple of, you know, quick things, the Denali Commission announcement here a couple of last week, you know, with some money for the Homer Harbor, with money for the Nanilchik Harbor. Yesterday, the announcement about Seldovia and Jackaloff Bay and their dock, two point three million, to try and help with that. A variety of different job creation activities. And also, you know, we've been involved with the homeland security enhancement, trying to make sure that that things on the Kenai Peninsula are what we want them to be and that people are safe. As far as a state update, we have been involved with a lot of things with mariculture, and I'm sure Cass will mention some of that. But being able to assist with, there's a there's a variety of different experiments going on right now as far as using kelp and some of the other products from the sea for different kinds of skincare along with with different kinds of food and and things. If you didn't get a chance to see this past month's October Alaska business, it did feature the Kenai Peninsula. There were some great pictures and things of the driving school, some of the mariculture or not mariculture maritime things that we've got going on in Seward, and a variety of other things. As most of you know, I mentioned to you all last time that that I was probably come one last time, and that was it. I have had the pleasure to work with all of you, and especially, you know, Terry and the administration and the city clerks and, you know, Paul Ostrander when Paul was here and things. But I am retiring as of the end of December, and we are very, very fortunate to have a new executive director that starts on January one, and her name is Cassidy Cameron. So Cassidy, will you come up and do the rest?
Thanks, Tim, and thank you, Mayor Gabriel, for having us tonight. I like to always comment that we've kind of incubated Tim along, and now we're going to shove him out of the nest, and so it's good to see him going on to his next chapter. And it's been a pleasure to be able to work with him and alongside him and learn with his vision and his relationship development. So I'm looking forward to this opportunity, and I work look forward to continuing to work with the city of Kenai and identifying how to grow and progress the way that you guys want to within that vision. What we like to do is look at everybody's capital improvement projects and then start kind of, you know, beating the street on what kind of funding opportunities are out there and what would fit and what would make sense for you guys. So I'm looking forward to, I've sent a couple of emails to Christine Cunningham and the staff on different funding opportunities that could meet your needs, and we're looking forward to advocating and supporting those needs and figuring out how to to make those ends meet. So as Tim talked about, we're working a lot on workforce development and not just getting people the skills and certifications they need to succeed in the work in the work labor field in the workforce, but also working with companies and working with organizations on employee retention programs so that people don't get just people don't just get certifications and then move on to other ventures outside of our region, but they're wanting to stay here. And that goes back to the quality of living pieces that we try to advocate and support and enrich, and then also make it a beautiful place to live, work, and and raise a family. So that's what we're we work very intimately with the state and with the borough staff as well as the the communities that we serve. With entrepreneurship, we look for ways that we can offer tools and resources to business at every level of their success and where they are, whether they're brand new, whether they're wanting to expand, or whether they're trying to figure out how to do some succession planning and go on to that next stage and and hand their businesses off. So we offer a lot of resources and tools and support to small businesses. We also really, really pride ourselves on our cultivation of regional partnerships to make sure that, you know, a lot of the challenges and the issues that you're facing, many of our other communities are facing the same thing, and if there's kind of some continuity and alignment between the two or three or four organizations that are experiencing the same things, then maybe there's some similarities and some partnerships that can be can be found in there, and dollars can go further and and common ground can be found. We like to identify, you know, the most reasonable and efficient use of of the lands that we use. So a lot of municipalities are looking at their inventory of lands and the best way to develop those in the ways that they want to as they identify those in their development strategies. And then broadband, there's a lot of broadband money that's coming into the state right now. The state office of broadband just received one billion dollars. We're making sure that connectivity is very much a priority for the Kenai Peninsula and that part of that connectivity is making sure that those infrastructure monies are going further and that they're being brought to the peninsula. That's me. Please save the date and jot down April twenty-fifth. We usually hold our industry outlook forum in January. This year, we're changing it up a little bit to have it be in the spring so that people can get on the road and not have to drive the icy roads in the dark. And we also are hosting it in Saldana this year at the regional sports complex. So it'll be a full day, and we're really excited. We'll be talking about our three-legged stool and ways and ways to find solutions and pathways forward, but also bring bring light to the Kenai Peninsula and showcase the Kenai Peninsula in the ways that we all get to live, work here, and be excited about it and proud of it. Our social medias, you can find us on all of the the regular outlets. Please follow us and look for updates, and we thank you very much for your time this evening. We look forward to getting to know you and getting to continue to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Cameron or councilmember Basen?
No questions, comment. I know you bring a lot of experience from your previous positions, and thanks for pushing Tim out the door.
It's a nudge.
Any other comments? Vice Mayor Naxted.
Yeah, just just a comment, and just welcome, Cameron. I met you up at AML a few years ago and all of that when you were the city manager, I believe, in Seldovia, and I believe that Tim was also before that. Is there what's with Seldovia? We got to get more down there, and it's a small town, and it's really cool that we have such quality people like Tim and yourself that are right here and available.
Well, thanks, and I'll give I'll give Tim some credit. He has a way to see potential in people and opportunities in people, and and I think that's part of his success and his visionary, his ability to to kind of be ahead of the curve in terms of bringing people along and and knowing he kind of has a good gut instinct. So I thank you for believing in a girl from a small town in Idaho.
Any further comments or questions? Yeah, I'd just like to say thanks, Tim, for all the work you've done for how many years has it been since you started over there? It's been a while.
Right out of fingers.
Yeah, so I think you certainly laid a pretty well well-laid foundation over there, and I think something that certainly Ms. Cameron can build and expand upon. So thank you for all you've done for the community over the years, and we look forward to working with with Cassidy. With that, we'll move to unscheduled public comments. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Anybody online? Oh, sorry. No, you're good, sorry.
Did I scare you?
No, I got this new script I got on.
Okay, well, this is small potatoes after that great report from both of those people. Kenai Arts Center has quite a few things going on this month. Something I haven't talked about, but some of you know about it, and that is a big deal to us, and that's our new storage shed is in place, is seated, is ready to go for its life with us, and we finally now have some storage for various things that we just don't have room for in that fine quality little building. Anyway, this month is my favorite show of the year, and that's the mural show. What is the mural show? Well, you probably have a vision in your mind if you haven't been to what we produce in the past, what we have produced in the past, and it is not like that. We've stretched canvas, we put canvas on the wall, lightweight canvas, it's called mural cloth, and it's stapled to the edges of the wall into the corners, blah, 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 all the way around the room with, of course, exception of the doorways and so forth. And then it's partitioned off, and each way that's been different. This year, it's very different. The lines are curved, and the lines are not sacred. They can be changed with the people who are painting. There's approximately fifteen people, fifteen artists that will be painting throughout the week, and they're they have access to the gallery and the back room and so forth, essentially ten to ten. And so the board members and other volunteers make sure that they can get in there at all those hours and paint away. The floors are covered and so forth and so on. It's a big production, but they started. So the thing that is really different this year is most of the time the lines have been more or less at least straight, maybe angled and so forth, but this year they are all curved. So but again, they can be changed depending on you and your neighbors, how you work it out, either jointly or whatever. So, you know, you never know exactly how that's all going to come out, and of course, neither do they. The so that's available to the public to go and look at the progress Wednesday through Saturday, noon to five, and then it will be part of the monthly show openings. Am I calling it the right thing? Yes, open opening on five to seven on Friday evening. So of course, everybody's welcome to that. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions, any questions of Ms. Nelson?
You have a question, I can tell.
Thank you, Mary. Is there any else, anybody else from the general public that'd like to speak to the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? If you are, if you're joining through Zoom, raise your hand. If you join through the app, press the press the raise your hand button if you'd like to comment. If you joined by phone, press the star nine to raise your hand. I don't think we have anybody on Zoom at this time to comment.
There are there are no hands raised.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to public hearings, item E one, ordinance number three three seven five dash two thousand twenty-three, accepting and appropriating donations from the Kenai See Indian Tribe to both the animal shelter and the senior center. Pleasure, counsel. Naxted.
Thank you, mayor. I move to enact ordinance thirty-three seventy-five, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number three three seven five dash two thousand twenty-three? Nobody in chambers or online? With that, we'll bring it back to counsel, comments from counsel. Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to thank the Kenai See Indian Tribe for their generous donation to to the Animal Control Center and the Senior Center, and in our packet, we were also provided with with a similar letter from last year for one thousand dollars for the for the animal control. So this has been something they've been doing for a couple of years, and it's greatly appreciated and be well used.
Thank you. Any further comments? And thank you for that, counsel, Vice Mayor Naxted. I was going to mention the same thing and certainly appreciate that and look forward to this ongoing partnership we have with the Kenai See Indian Tribe. With that, clerk, please call her all.
Councilmember Askin.
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel.
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel.
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted.
Yes.
Councilmember Dorfitt.
Yes.
Councilmember Basen.
Yes.
Student representative Tanner.
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number thirty-three seventy-five dash two thousand twenty-three is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we have item E two, ordinance number three three seven six dash two thousand twenty-three, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund, Parks and Recreation Department for the purchase of playground equipment utilizing a grant from Marathon Petroleum. Pleasure, counsel. Councilmember Basen.
I'd move to enact ordinance thirty-three seventy-six, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number three three seven six dash two thousand twenty-three? Nobody? Nobody online? Nobody in chambers or online? With that, we'll bring it back to council. Comments from council? Councilmember, uh, Basin?
No, no comments, but maybe just for the general public, if the city manager could give an overview?
Sure you may.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, uh, Basin. Um, I will touch on the mechanics of this and then I'll let, um, our Parks and Rec Director talk about the specific equipment that's gonna be acquired. Uh, in FY '23, which ended June 30th, we received twenty thousand dollars from Marathon Petroleum, um, for the purchase of some inclusive play equipment. Uh, it was intended to replace or be placed in municipal park where there previously was a, a very large and very focal, um, um, spruce tree that was a victim of the beetle infestation was killed. That tree had to be removed and left to kind of avoid in the playground. Um, we received the money in FY '23. I don't believe it was appropriated, so it lapsed into fund balance at year end. We wanna honor the, the donation, so this is now appropriating, appropriating it out of fund balance for the project. And I'll let, um, Parks and Rec Director Tyler talk about, uh, what's being purchased.
Mr. Bass?
Yeah, uh, if you, I added an attachment in the packet. It's called an inclusive seesaw, so it kind of hits right on the nose what the piece of equipment does. Uh, it's a feature we didn't have at the park was a seesaw. And it's being nice at that park because we do have a pathway, a cement pathway that'll roll up to it. But it has a number of features that go beyond, like ADA is kind of looked at the minimum and this goes beyond the minimum. It has colors, it has sensory, and it's highly accessible at that park. And, uh, and it also fell within that price range that we were able to get the grant for. So, it seemed like this piece of equipment hit the biggest age range and the biggest user groups is why we selected it.
Further questions, comments? I guess I got one. Um, when do you anticipate that this will be installed?
Uh, we're hoping to get it in the spring and then when the ground unthaws, like, so once, if, if this pass, if this ordinance passes, to purchase it and get it ordered and it should be able to get here in early summer or spring and get it in the ground for next summer.
Okay, very good. And then I would just maybe suggest that once we do get that out, we'll get that and take photos and, uh, send to Marathon with a note, a letter of appreciation for the final product.
Uh, yes, yeah. I actually, I, I think, uh, I was speaking with a member of Marathon that we worked with this on. Uh, they, they wanna be there when we get it all done and take, do some photos and everything as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Further questions or comments? You know, I'd like to follow up and say thank you to, uh, Marathon Petroleum, um, for this, uh, generous, um, gift. And it looks like a pretty, thank you, uh, Mr. Bass for the, uh, for the insert that was added to the, um, to the packets. We had a visual of what, uh, we're looking at and then, um, what's the age limit? Is this good for adults too or it looks like might be kind of fun?
I think it caps at twelve.
Okay. All right.
You don't need another knee.
Yeah. There you go. And age, or not a size limit and age limit, I guess, which is, uh, almost worse, actually. All right, thank you. With that, uh, clerk, please call and roll.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxton?
Yes.
Councilmember Dofit?
Yes.
Councilmember Basin?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number 3376-2023 is enacted.
Thank you, Ms. Tabado. Next up, we have item E3, resolution number 2023-62, establishing the 2024 city council regular meeting schedule. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Naxton?
Uh, thank you, mayor. I move to adopt resolution 2023-62.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution 2023-62? Nobody in chambers or online? Bring it back to council. Any questions, comments, deliberation? Any none?
No comments. I was gonna ask for your announce.
Very good. Thank you. Your announce consent was requested. Is there any objection? Vice Mayor Naxton?
Yeah, no, no objection. Um, the, the only thing I did note, uh, is the December, first December meeting, um, that might be AML, but we don't know. Let's say move it around. So, we might be coming back to that date again, uh, like we did this year. So, I'd make a note.
Yes. So, yeah, caveat, that was under that, previous to, oh, two years ago, the AML had their annual meeting in November, which would, which allowed us to cancel the second meeting in November since they, then they moved it to the first, uh, part of December, which has, uh, had us make that cancellation then so we can be accommodated. So, thanks for that. Your announce consent was requested. Is there any objection? See, no objection. Resolution number 2023-62 is adopted. Next up, we have resolution number 2023-63, requesting the governor of the state of Alaska designate by proclamation an economic disaster for the 2023 Upper Cook Inlet Eastside SetNet fishery and supporting a recovery plan. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Naxton?
Thank you, mayor. I move to adopt resolution 2023-63.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number 2023-63? To comment? And before we get to your testimony, uh, Mr. Coleman, I'd like to actually, um, pass the gallup to the vice mayor. Um, and just note that I do, uh, have a conflict that, uh, my wife and I do commercially fish, uh, set net in Cook Inlet. We were one of the, uh, impacted participants of this, uh, fishery for, um, 2023. Um, and although this legislation doesn't actually grant any sort of, um, uh, financial, uh, relief for that, it's sort of the first step in working towards, uh, a possible, uh, economic or, uh, management relief for our fisheries. So, with that, uh, I ask to be recused and, um, ask the vice mayor to handle the, uh, rescinding over this, um, legislation.
Yeah. And if I could, can you just, before you start, uh, if, it's normally when we do that, the, uh, the person that recuses themselves, well, they can't vote, but they'd also don't engage in any of the discussion. And, uh, and often that's quite appropriate. And this particular case, I guess I'd be asking the council here, this is just off the top of my head and, and put the clerk on the spot perhaps, but is that, uh, although the, the, the mayor cannot vote on it, that when we discuss it later as a, as an expert, that he might be able to provide some information for us or some input. And, uh, perhaps that's a legal question too. Since it's something that we've never, that I recall doing, but it's, it's a non-controversial as far as that goes type of ordinance resolution.
Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor Naxton. I, I would recommend against the mayor testifying from the dais, um, if he's not gonna participate. I mean, he's still, based on his testimony, has the ability to sway or not sway votes. Um, I'd recommend that if he wanted to testify, that he testified as a member of the public if it was necessary for him to testify.
Well, that's fair enough. I'll, I'll, I'll pull that back. I just, I just thought I'd test the system a little bit. Uh, go ahead, Kenny.
Okay. Evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, council members. Um, I'm Ken Coleman. I'm a Eastside SetNetter, vice president of the Kenai Peninsula Fisherman's Association and, and the person that's been tasked with doing these or bringing forward these, uh, emergency requests, uh, for our group. I'm dismayed to be here again in the sense that this is the fifth time in six years we're seeking some, uh, relief, uh, relative to a disaster declaration. As you all probably know and have heard for months now, at least since the, the end of March, the Eastside SetNet group was not going to fish this year, uh, unless there were extraordinary circumstances in which Kings, uh, came back in numbers that supported, uh, fishing beyond fifteen thousand. Of course, that didn't occur even though the, the sustainable goal was more than that. It still didn't happen. Uh, we are some four hundred and thirty-five, uh, small business members now who for, uh, many years haven't been able to ply our craft and, and, uh, uh, put money in the bank for many people. Put, uh, food and, and, uh, shelter, uh, pay taxes and, and, and be a part of these communities. We are some eighty-some percent local folks and those dollars circulate in these communities, uh, some six to seven times and those just aren't made up in any other fashion. Uh, we have a, we have had a, uh, a, um, resolution from the Kenai Peninsula Borough. We're hoping to get Saldana to, uh, to do the same next week. The Peninsula delegation has forwarded a letter to the governor as well as the Borough Mayor on his own. Um, and we're, we've got a Board of Fish, uh, hearing this year in which we're hoping to find a way to, a creative way to, to make some, uh, some fishing palatable to, to all concerned. Um, I've done, uh, as I said now, the fifth one in six years and I'm pretty familiar with all the numbers and all the things that go into, to crafting this thing and, and, um, all those numbers are based on some, on assumptions to some degree, but in, in, and at the end are, are based on numbers that Fish and Game provide to us in terms of what was, what was done, what was escaped, who harvested what, in our case, nothing. Uh, and, uh, and what historical, uh, percentages, uh, are prescribed to each gear group. And so, I came up with a number that, that was, uh, I thought was supportable, uh, based on the record, based on the information from, uh, from Fish and Game. And, uh, uh, we're try, again, we're trying to find a way forward in a very difficult environment. And as Mayor, uh, Gabriel suggested, this is the first step in, in getting to the point of declaring a disaster and then having the, the governor move that on to the United States Department of Commerce. Uh, they will, uh, walk through the, the state's, uh, vetting process to see if they, they think that, uh, uh, coincided with the, or ascribed to the allowable causes. And I'll try to wrap up real quick. And, and then, uh, we get a, if we get a disaster approval from the Department of Commerce, then it's like go out and find the money. Uh, the money, money that comes to us, uh, is not, uh, uh, done according to any formula. Uh, no one knows exactly how that number is arrived at when it comes back our way. And indeed, we haven't had a, we haven't even had, uh, remuneration from 2018. So, all these are in the po- process and everybody's waiting on with, waiting with, uh, all they've got to, to try to get something. And it won't be a lot, but it'll be something and meaningful to the SetNet community. And with that, uh, I appreciate you listening to me and I'm available for any questions, anything at all.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. And I was supposed, I was gonna ask for you, is there anybody from council here that has any, any questions at all for Mr. Coleman? Vice, uh, your basin?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, um, the numbers, uh, you said there are about four hundred and fifty so small businesses, right, that are doing the SetNet? How many, how many of them have stopped or can, is there, are you, are you able to tell what the actual effect is on it over these years and how, how much pressure it's put on families and businesses to where they can no longer even do it anymore? Uh, your microphone?
Hit it with my, with the, my papers, excuse me. It's difficult to ascertain what that number is. Uh, the, the Fishing Game has us buy, SetNetters buy, uh, permits or, or buoy stickers every year. It's the intent to fish in the, in the Eastside SetNet, uh, area so they know approximately how many are, are actually intending to fish. If they really do or not is, is, is unknown to us and, and, and it's, uh, it's a real, uh, confusing thing. But anecdotally, I think, uh, and Mayor Gabriel's and Mrs. Gabriel are my neighbors just to the north. Uh, we can see that some people have not done that over the course of the last several years.
Thank you. Councilmember Dofit?
I find my, I can extrapolate a little bit of that. I did find out from Fishing Game, uh, the biologist, air biologist, come on with Confish, did state that the twenty-year average participants in the fishery, um, to date is there, from them was three hundred and forty-seven participants is the twenty-year average roughly with what they, they, they have. So, of the four hundred and thirty-five permits, they're saying on average about three hundred and forty-seven in the twenty-year average of who participates on that number.
Coleman?
Yeah, excuse me. I may expound on that just a little bit and, and Councilman, Councilman, uh, Dofit is correct. But within those, uh, four hundred and thirty-five, there are multiple permit holders. For my, for myself, I hold two permits. My wife holds two merits, two permits. And so, the four thirty-five is indicative of the number of permits that are intending to fish. Uh, however, three hundred and forty-seven made landings and some of those were, were duplicate permits. So, the, the permits are being used, but, but one person is actually going up and selling their fish, uh, with two permits in their hand. If that makes sense to you.
Or Basin?
Thank you. Uh, one, so one more question and I, and I, I think I know the answer to this. Has any other group ever been shut down completely the way this, this group has?
Uh, not in recent memory. It's, it's, it's not unheard of. You may recall and some of the folks in the room have been here as almost as long as me, although I'm getting kind of long in the tooth. Uh, Bristol Bay in the mid nineteen eighties was shut down completely because of the lack of, uh, of sockeye, uh, runs. And, and so, it's not unheard of. Uh, in this case, it's not the sockeye, uh, it's the, the lack of king salmon and our, our, uh, management plan that couples us with another gear group. Uh, if one closes, the other one closes, although it's a bit of an apple and oranges situation. One group just pivots to another biomass, we cannot do that. And so, we're completely shut out of the economic picture in any way. There's no way to, uh, to mitigate that, that we're just done.
Thank you. And I guess my final comment, when we, when we get ready for this, we probably should take a vote and not do unanimous on this, correct?
That's correct. Any other questions of Mr. Coleman, council? Actually, I, I do and I just, it was kind of a, more of a clarification. I, of course, I'm the author of this, you know, this, this, this resolution and I, uh, I'm not involved in the industry. Family used to be and I kind of relied on the industry to give me some of the numbers. And industry could be actually fishing, wildlife, Fishing Game. And, uh, and, uh, but, uh, the, uh, the fact is, is there was, there was no fishing this year. So, I wanna know in any industry that is being impacted, what that impact might be to it if it's grocery stores? You know, something like that. What, what is that impact to, to that store? In this particular case, the number, uh, overall is like, that I have here is seven and a half million dollars just to the Eastside Fisherman and that's really what we're talking about. And I didn't generate that number, the, the industry did. Can you explain, um, clearly how that number, um, where it came from?
Excuse me, uh, Vice Mayor. I, uh, I, a few assumptions, if you will, uh, and, and even Fishing Game uses some assumptions that come to their, to their year-end numbers. Uh, I took the, uh, the drift catch and typically we, uh, split our drift catch sixty, forty, sixty them, forty us, although that used to be higher, but we've had regulatory things that have brought that down, regulatory restrictions. Uh, and so, there's one assumption. We took forty percent of that. Took, uh, forty percent of the over escapement in the Kenai River, which is, which was a million, uh, uh, three hundred and fifty-one thousand. And river catch was approximately four hundred thousand. Usually, uh, the, the department says three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand are caught in river. Pulled that back out, I'll use the higher number again, trying to be conservative. And that ca- got us down to a million nine hundred and fifty-one thousand. The midpoint of the run, uh, escapement level is a million two hundred and fifty. So, there's seven hundred and one thousand fish that went unharvested. Even that, with the high escapement of two hundred, a million two hundred and fifty-one, we had nearly two hu- two, that, two million fish that went into the river. Um, we don't even think about the, uh, the, uh, dipnet fishery. It doesn't even come into these equations anywhere and it's really hard to quantify and, and, and the, and the state only gets those, uh, numbers far in advance. And so, that's not even in any of these assumptions. And did the same in Casiloft, except for in Casiloft, uh, there was a, a discapement about nine, about nine hundred and fifty thousand, let's call it, which was two hundred percent over the hot, the top of their goal. There is no in river catch on Casiloft. There's a dipnet fishery and a set, a small SetNet fishery there. And, and took forty percent of that. The drift fleet, uh, caught about a million three hundred and change and we took forty percent of that. And to that, you can extrapolate straightforward, is, is, uh, five point five pounds per fish, a dollar fifty-seven, uh, per pound. And you can come up with three different numbers and add those numbers divided by four thirty-five and you come up to the number. and you come up to the number. I mean, I used to do it and have done it, section by section, stat area by stat area. It is difficult to do it in that fashion and it's not necessary for the bottom line. We need to get these numbers to the state. They'll do the deep dive and their numbers may very well come up different than ours. What they use to send to the federal government, I have no idea. I know how they, I know that they do the scrutinization and they apply it to the causes and apply that to the allowable causes and so they move forward with that. But it's a diminishing return issue with all the bureaucracy in the sense of the federal government because the policies that guide these emergency issues or disaster issues nationwide is self-limiting, hasn't been looked at in some 20 years and doesn't fit today's chronic issues such as potential global warming, overfishing and those kinds of things desperately need to be done. I'm working with the federal government and the senators to see if we can affect that policy. But that's a long-winded way to say we made some assumptions, but the numbers come from Fish and Game at the end of the day. The 5.5 average, you know, 1.1 dollar 57 cents a pound really drives it and it's very close to that. Perhaps just a little bit more.
Well, thank you. It's an accurate but not precise number, which is, to me-
It's very ballpark.
It's just, it's in there.
It's right there.
Thank you. Any further questions of Councilmember Sonar?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Naxted. Mr. Coleman, I want to make sure I heard you correctly. You said that this is the fifth time in the past six years that the set netters have been shut down, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then I think I heard you say that families are still waiting for emergency funds from 2018?
It has just been forwarded to the Pacific Salmon Commission for dissemination of funds, but it's been since 2018.
Is that the earliest year of these five years that we're talking about?
Yes, it is.
So in other words, if I'm understanding you correctly, these 435 small businesses or 347 families, however you want to look at that number, none of these people have received any emergency funds for any of these five years?
No. I might add, just because we came up with a number of 7 million, and I've got, it's a little bit higher, but it's very close to that. That may not be what the, it will not be what number the United States Department of Commerce will disseminate to this fishery. It could be 75% of that, 50% of that, and then when you get that to that point, then they split it up between processors, harvesters, that would be our sector, crew members, the community, and so all this comes out of that and then the set netters, in this case, will get whatever's left.
Right, and I understand that. I was just thinking about the actual years. So in other words, if the monies for 2018 have just now slowed down, all the subsequent years then are still basically in the wings waiting?
Except for, I might add that 2018 and 2020 have been combined and that's what's in front of the Pacific States Salmon Commission to disseminate. Pretty small number at the end of the day.
Okay, thank you.
Members, Dothet? Yes, just for clarification on that, were, there was also disasters payouts from the 2012 and 2014 and 2015, correct?
No.
First and second rounds?
Well, that's a different, that's a different component, Councilmember Dothet. It's, I'm not sure what you're referring to. 2012 was a disaster on its own and we received a payout in that and I believe it was 2015, it took about three years. The others are, had to, any other payouts that went to any fishermen had to do with the COVID issues.
Yeah, that was the 2020, I believe, and then 2018 was a separate disaster proclamation, correct, what they got to put into one?
2018 and 2020 were, yes.
Okay. And one more, just for clarification, the numbers that are in this, the seven, that comes from you, correct? Your calculations, not from Fish and Games, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
They'll do their deep dive and if it changes, they'll be the final arbiter of that.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor, so no more comments, but I do want to add for our fellow, for our council members up here, I want to co-sponsor this with Vice Mayor Naxted and I would encourage the rest of us to do the same.
I would be glad to co-sponsor.
Thank you. Probably ought to get through the public comments and I appreciate that, and it was requested actually in my memo too. Thank you, Kenny. Is there anybody else from the audience here that would like to speak on this resolution? Resolution 2023-63? Is there anybody online?
Any members of the public online who would like to speak at this time, please raise your hand to be acknowledged. And if you are on the app, you'll press the raise hand button. If you are joining by the phone, you'll press the star nine button to raise your hand.
We're seeing nobody, so that brings us back to council. And if I could just begin, since it's my resolution initially, it says, I think we're all aware that the east side fishery was closed all summer and that is very unusual and very impacting on our economy and our commercial fishermen that are in our community here. And I did ask for some numbers and that's where the 7.5 million dollars comes in. And that's just the impact of the, to the fishery of the east side fishermen. Now, you can take, that's to them, but if you take that, if you're an economist, which I'm not, but what they would typically use would be a factor of like seven on top of that, as far as the economy goes, it would, it probably is more in the neighborhood of a $50 million in our economy. You would multiply it, that dollar gets multiplied as it gets spent. And so at any rate, I think that it's important to support our commercial fishermen and I hope that council will concur with this resolution. And if you care to be a co-sponsor, you're all welcome. Any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I just wanted to request a couple of the whereas's, possibly modifications. One being the whereas number six, when it starts talking biology and escapement goals, I think that could be taken out on this. I don't think it's the city's place to start talking with biology, there's state biologist and I think it doesn't affect the meaning of this and the intent of this for declaration to have that in there. I think we could take that out. And then I'm concerned about number fours whereas, when we're talking about specific numbers, there's so much speculation and extrapolation on numbers going up and down and interpretation of this. I think we could leave that out also and still get the same effect stating the state to figure out their numbers and go before them without the city stating a specific number that we support. And I think we could still extrapolate that we want to come to whereas, the resolution of supporting the fishermen to get something, but also supporting all the other recovery plan efforts that could go directly with this without specifically laying out a number, just because there's so much speculation with those numbers, that it could be interpreted in so many different ways. And I think it's just kind of a slippery slope to figure out who's going to be, how much they should get and what we think the total loss is for any one fishery. So those are the two that I would like to see, number six whereas, and then number four whereas. And I think it would still be, a still supportive document to be able to go before.
So Councilmember Dothet, if you want to, I don't know that you should put both of them into a, into a motion, but if you're looking to do one, pick one and then-
I would just pick, I think it's one, two, three, six. The sixth whereas, I guess I would make a motion to remove that whereas from the proclamation or resolution, I guess.
Would you mind reading which one that is?
Whereas, "At the same time the set net fishery was closed, both the Kenai and the Casiloft rivers far exceeded the midpoint of their sustainable escapement goals for sockeye," and then it goes on to the next one from there.
Do we have a second? Second in. Okay, Mr. Daniel, or Councilmember Daniel seconded it. If we have no discussion, Councilmember Sonar?
I'm just looking at four and six, the ones that Councilmember Dothet brought up. And I could actually agree to drop number four for the argument presented. Number six, though, I mean, the city has nothing to do with setting the sustainable escapement goals, those are set. And the numbers come in during the summer and are reported, and again, we have nothing to do with that. So as far as stating that the rivers had exceeded the midpoint of their sustainable escapement goals, I mean, that's a generic statement, which we aren't coming up with numbers and saying, this is the number. To me, that's a generic statement that is truthful. I don't have a problem with number six. So maybe explain it to me what the issue with number six is.
Councilmember Dothet?
Yes, I just feel it starts to getting us into the biology of the run and we're here looking for, to stay as neutral as possible with the city. We start talking escapement goals and what we're thinking was met and do we agree with it? And I think by eliminating it, doesn't really affect what the actual ask is of the fishery and I think we're staying out of it. If you remove that sentence, it still doesn't close the fact that they were closed and that there could be disaster funds needed to help not only this fishery but other fisheries that were affected and other supportive activities like we've assisted in number eight. I don't see it adds anything to it necessarily and kind of eliminates the whole biological information and data that doesn't really give us any more teeth into what we're asking for.
Any further discussion? My opinion on it is, is one is, it's true, it's a biology thing, but it came from the Department of Fish and Game. And this document, if somebody picks it up in a year or five years, whatever, and reads it, well, you know, you can see what the title is and some of the whereas's, but this also kind of paints a bit of a picture of what is going on at this point in time. And I don't think that it, it doesn't twist the arm of the governor or anybody else in particular, it's not that at all. It does provide just that the resource was exceeded in both of the drainages here, the Kenai River and the Casiloft River. Anybody else? Any more? Clark, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Daniel?
You voting on this as amended or just as-
We're currently voting on the amendment, which is to remove whereas six.
Gotcha. Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Hey, just to clarify, we are voting to remove the number six whereas?
That's what the motion was, correct?
No.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
No.
Councilmember Dothet?
Yes.
Councilmember Baisden?
No.
Councilmember Askin?
No.
You have two yes votes and four no votes, the amendment fails.
Okay, it remains as is. Councilmember Dothet, did you have another motion?
Yes, I'd like to remove the whereas number four. Want me to go ahead and read, I guess?
Please.
Whereas, it is conservatively estimated that the 2023 east side set net fishery lost out on approximately 7 million 500,000 in harvest or more than $17,000 per permit.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonar. Any discussion?
On this, the reasoning behind this was just, it's so much speculation on how much the loss was. I mean, if you look at this, there was that one lay down item that I did add, and it shows a 10-year average harvest, so if you were to go with that, it's much less than the 864,000 number that this is based off of. And there's just a lot of interpretation and us getting, it makes it look like we're telling the state that we want X number of dollars based on our research. And we didn't necessarily do the research and there's a lot of other agencies that will do the research and figure out above and beyond what the actual numbers would be or what they feel reasonable. And I just want to stay out of that speculative interpretations, so to speak, on this. And that's why removing it, again, it doesn't say that we're not asking for funds, it just doesn't put a direct number of what we're asking for. I mean, the state could come back and say, you know, we thought it was 9 million, or they come back and say it's three, but for us to put a number on it, I think that's up for the agencies that are actually divvying out the funds to put that in there.
Any further discussion on that? You know, again, I concur that it doesn't have to do with exactly the title that it is, you know, but it's a dollar amount. If we had a resolution like this regarding a business that was being impacted, any other industry, I should say, if it's oil and gas or whatever, we, you know, I think to justify it one way or the other, we'd want to have the best number of what that impact into our community is. And if that's about 7.5 million dollars and then, you know, like I mentioned before with the multiplier, it's a pretty good chunk of change and it impacts our community significantly. And I think there's some value in having it in there and just in the community impact. So I'm inclined to retain that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Naxted. You know, looking at this, when you initially read it, I'm inclined to agree that we should look at taking it out just because as it reads, you know, 17,000 per permit, I don't want to get into that business of, you know, saying, suggesting that we are wanting to support that and the fact that who gets it, just the permit holder, does it go to the crew, does it go to everybody else? You know, I'm not, you know, it's just, you still know, you're not sure. I do want to support our set netters for sure and I do want to make sure that something is on the table. I just don't know if a dollar amount is the best option to just put out there and let the state decide and divvy it out and make it, you know, make it a little more neutral in that regard, so we don't have, you know, well, you said it's got this much on there, you know, it just, it just didn't sit as well in that light to me.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Dothet?
I guess if I'd had more than one person's view on the numbers and we had more data or more in-depth analysis on where these numbers came from, but, I mean, I hate to put it out there, but if you're, by running those numbers, that's saying that they would have caught every extra fish that went up the river. If they have openers two days a week for 12-hour periods, they don't have the nets in the water 24/7. To say that they would have caught every single fish could greatly overinflate how many fish they did catch. And that just gets down to a slippery slope on speculation. And I just don't think putting the speculative numbers in there is warranted to support the fact that they were closed and they didn't make any money at all and the state can determine what the value of that fishery was. That's an awful big number to put out there. And when people see that, they get kind of like, wow, we're going to pay 7.5 million dollars in possible state or federal funds to 400 people? That's a big number to put out there based on speculation. And that's why I think just leaving that out there leaves it more neutral and is open to other entities to do it and make up those numbers.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clark, would you please call the roll on removing the fourth whereas?
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
No.
Councilmember Dothet?
Yes.
Councilmember Baisden?
No.
Councilmember Dothet? Councilmember Basden?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
And Assistant Representative Tanner?
Yes.
You have five yes votes and one no vote. The motion to amend passes.
Okay, thank you. So that brings us back, Resolution 2023-63 is amended, um, that hopefully we can all agree on at this point. And, uh, so kind of gets back to the initial point that, or request I had is if, does the council want to, uh, to co-sponsor, um, this resolution as amended? I think that's just kind of a nod if, if so, it's not something we need to vote on. So is there anyone that doesn't want to?
I probably won't co-sponsor, but I will say that I will be in, voting for it. With those, um, the biggest reason I'm voting for it would be not only just the effects of our community, but it also specifically calls out that hopefully this will come up and help with funds for a recovery plan. And it states in there under the eighth, whereas they support a recovery plan to directly assist fisheries participants and benefits all users of this important natural resource. And I think that opens that, with that verbiage, hopefully the state will understand that it, it's not just one small group that it affects. It's this entire natural resource and we need to come up with a recovery plan. Because even as Mr. Coleman said, it's, we're starting to see a pattern, you know? Every year we're coming back to disaster, disaster, disaster. At some point, we got to start making plans that we can hopefully get away from disasters and, and figure out a happy medium that we start to see a recovery. And hopefully this will release and help with some funds to make those recovery plans needed for all user groups that are involved, um, not just the Eastside Centers, but everybody in the community. It affects everybody when everybody, when this fishery gets closed as a trickle-down effect. And like it was brought up, it was, this fishery was closed due to a, a link to a closure of the King Salmon Fishery, which greatly affects a lot of people too. So it's a trickle-down effect. They're paired together. And I think with having that recovery plan definition in there, I'm hoping that we can get on the table and both different entities can come to some kind of a plan in the future. And with Board of Fish coming up, maybe we'll see some positive outlook going with that.
Member Basden?
I would still like to be added as a co-sponsor as, as the resolution has been amended.
Thank you. Councilmember Askin?
I would like to, um, co-sponsor the resolution.
Okay, that's fair enough. So, uh, Councilmember, uh, Sonar, sorry.
I'll just repeat what I said earlier. I would like to, uh, co-sponsor this resolution as amended.
Councilmember Daniel?
Would also like to be put as well.
Yeah, thank you. Any other discussion on this? So, uh, Clark, go ahead and call, uh, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Axced?
Yes.
Councilmember Dotit?
Yes.
Councilmember Basden?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Assistant Representative Tanner?
Yes.
You have six yes votes. Um, Resolution 2023-63 is adopted as amended.
Thank you, council. With that, I'll pass the gavel back to the, to the mayor. I didn't think I'd be doing that so soon.
Yeah, we'll break in early here. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, council. Uh, that will take a 10-minute out of ease.
Back on the record, Councilor on item E five, Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash sixty-four, authorizing a professional services, services agreement and corresponding purchase order for the two thousand twenty-four apron crack seal marking and seal coat project for the Kenai Municipal Airport. Pleasure, Council. Your next then.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-four, requesting unanimous consent. Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that like to speak to Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash sixty-four?
If you are on Zoom at this time, you may raise your hand to be acknowledged. If you are joining Zoom on the phone, you'll press the raise hand button on the app. If you're joining by the phone, press star nine to raise your hand.
I see nobody in chambers or online. We'll bring back council comments from council. You know, as consent was requested, council member, Vice Mayor Naxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought maybe the, the city manager might want to speak to this, or I see we have Public Works here too.
Mr. Yvank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Naxton. I can talk about the generals out if you have specific questions regarding the project, I defer to Mr. Curtin. But this is a project that will provide crack sealing and seal coat for the airport's apron area. This contract will provide for the engineers to basically spec the project and develop the specifications and the bid documents. Will likely, depending on the actual grant funding cycle of the FAA, will likely be bid early next spring or could be next summer, just depends on their, their grant cycle. These costs will be ninety-three point seven-five percent reimbursable when the actual construction grant is awarded. It is being limited to the apron of the airport because the main runway and the parallel taxiway are both in design phase for refurbishment and we're not able to get grant funds to do this type of work on a surface that we're getting ready to tear up and refurbished anyways. So if you do have any specific questions, Mr. Curtin can answer those.
Any further questions, clarification needed? And now you asked consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing on Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash sixty-four is adopted. Bring us to item E six, Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash sixty-five, authorizing a contract for employee healthcare and basic life insurance effective January first, two thousand twenty-four. Pleasure, Council, Vice Mayor, or Councilmember Naxton, I'm sorry, Councilmember Beazin.
You got me?
It's all confusing tonight.
I know it's confusing. You got medication? Moved in that Resolution number twenty thirty-five sixty-five. Ask for unanimous. Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that like, general public that like to speak to Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash sixty-five? Any online? Nobody in chambers or online? Just maybe, could you give us a quick overview, Mr. Yvank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Only because this is a pretty good fiscal note here.
It definitely does. And with us tonight too is our HR Director, Ms. Randall, so she can dive into the real details if council wants. But seems like we just did this, but we are on an annual renewal for the city's employee healthcare program now. And so we did this about a year ago. Changes for this year. We, when we budgeted the FY twenty-four budget, it included a projected eight and a half percent increase at December thir-, or effective January one. The rate increase that we were proposed by Primera originally was eighteen and a half percent. We did solicit, we did receive a second quote from a competitor, a competitor, Moda. And Primera did then reduce their initial quote from eighteen and a half percent to eight and a half percent. Which is, which is great, but it's also concerning because I think in a lot of ways, the actuarial information and their projections warrant the eighteen and a half percent. And these are business decisions they make to try to keep us. It is a bit like kicking the can down the road. Other modifications that we've chosen this year, in the past year, we had two plans. We offered to employees a two thousand dollar deductible plan and a three thousand dollar deductible plan. We're recommending to eliminate the two thousand dollar deductible plan and go solely with the three thousand dollar deductible plan. The net deductible to employees will remain unchanged. We fund the difference with a health reimbursement arrangement that we fund. But because the city's had a two thousand dollar deductible plan, the entire, you know, fifteen years I've worked at the city and I would venture to say that over time, that two thousand is now three thousand. And we didn't feel that the very minor difference in premium for employees between the two thousand and the three thousand dollar deductible plan warranted keeping two plans. So this again recommends going solely to the three thousand dollar deductible plan. Probably the last key point is that we are recommending a switch in the provider for our life insurance for employees and the ancillary coverages, the optional coverages that employees are able to purchase at their, at their discretion. We're switching from Unum to Lincoln Financial. And with that, I would ask Ms. Randall if there's anything I missed or if you have any other more detailed questions, she's here to answer those.
Councilmember Beazin.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. For the city manager then, what is the, what is the annual cost per employer, the city's cost per employee now, what, what will it be? You know that?
Mr. Yvank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Beazin. I don't remember that number exactly off the top of my head. I don't know if Ms. Randall has it. But this, the, the changes that we are incorporating in this document represent about a sixty-five thousand dollar savings over what we projected July one. So it's, we are coming in under our budget. I don't have that exact number, but I'm happy to get that communicated with council. It's a lot.
Yeah, if you could follow up, if you could, I'd like to, if you share that number with us, that'd be fine. And I just want to compare it to what the other cities and what the borough paid and where we're at in comparison.
Further discussion? Councilmember Dothet.
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate that it is disturbing that we're looking at, I would say that we're going to see it again next year, another, realistically, we might see that extra ten percent coming next year. And we're definitely going to have to look at, you know, in budget, where our increases might have to come. If we keep seeing a ten percent increase or more each year, it's going to be a sizable increase to our cost of health insurance in the next five to ten years. Who knows where we're going to be at, but hopefully maybe the government will try to help get it under control a little bit. But this is alarming increases that we're seeing and I'm hoping we can definitely start keeping an eye out for future revenues and hopefully we can start to look out that when we look at future budget plans.
Further discussion? Councilor, or Vice Mayor Naxton.
Thank you. Really shouldn't ask this question because it's, but you know, the city on its own does this insurance. We have our insurance plan and I'm not sure what the other cities in the borough do. And for what the borough itself does, is, is there any possibility down the road, and this is to Mr. Dothet's, ask Councilmember Dothet's comment really, you know, to combine some of the forces? Is that even, that are doable? You know, let's say the city of Saldat and the city of Kenai, if we increase that, that number of individuals, would it decrease? Or do you think that it would continue to go up at the same rate regardless of how many people have under, under an umbrella? Is that just impossible to do?
Mr. Yvank.
So it's not even worth discussing?
Oh, Ms. Randall? Okay, Ms. Randall through the city manager.
Hi, I don't know that that would be a possibility for us, but I did want to speak to Councilmember Dothet's comment. Nationwide, health insurance costs are in two thousand twenty-four expected to be up around eight percent. So I think that for us to be able to, to keep that this year is actually really, really good. This is based on largely the cost of specialty medication and, and usually a small portion of people that have conditions that, that increase the cost of their care. So that being said, I think you have a valid concern, but I do think that the city is, we have good tools to look at. I, I know one of the things that we're talking about in the future is moving to a qualifying high deductible health plan that would have an HSA, might be able to continue to move our premiums or keep our premiums low.
Mr. Yvank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Naxton. I think we, we continually look for every opportunity to, you know, and method to control our healthcare costs. You know, what you described, there's complexity in all of that, you know, when, when we look at, when we look at the borough, the borough is in a fully insured plan. They have a collective bargaining agreement and they're subject to a lot of other factors that we're not necessarily, you know, subject. So just getting everybody together would be difficult. I think if it's going to work at that level, it really would require the state to step in and formulate some sort of plan in which maybe they mandated that all school districts in the state participated in. I mean, something to build a really big and robust, huge population of, of participants in that then we might be able to then join in those, you know, the state operates a poly-sub plan which municipalities are able to participate in. We can get, we think our program right now is better than that poly-sub plan. So you can tell you for twenty-five years I've been doing this and I don't think anybody's found the magic bullet for healthcare at this point. Costs just keep seeming to escalate and, you know, specialty drugs are just another example of what is really driving that right now. Very few, you know, very few patients are driving a lot of the costs in these plans. But that is, that is what our society's doing right now.
Are there questions, comments? I just, and just for clarification, I don't know if I missed this, but the employee, employee cost share still remains at thirteen percent, is that correct?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, we didn't, we didn't change that. That was what was budgeted. We kept the same.
Okay, very good. Further comments? You know, as consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing on Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash sixty-five is adopted. That brings us to item H nine, action approval, Mayor Mayoral, liaison nominations for appointment to committees and commissions. And I think I tried to plug anybody in where I, they'd kind of requested and moved the duties around a little bit. I know one of the things I talked about with our city clerk too is the role of the, of the liaison to planning and zoning. That's kind of a heavy lift at times because you're at every, you know, basically every Wednesday you've got a meeting of the month. So I'm, I'm open to looking at maybe dividing those, that role, you know, six months, six months or, you know, splitting it between two people if that's, I know, and just, I'm looking at Councilman Dothet because he's the one that was plugged in as liaison for that. But I just, I, I am aware that that's a, you know, a commitment, more so than the other committee commission. So certainly it's something that we can look at. If you, just letting me know if there's a little bit of meeting fatigue that happens, that you want to maybe look at swapping or taking a break or something along those lines.
Yeah, right now, as far as that goes, Wednesdays are probably the best day for me. So that works out pretty good for me to be able to make meetings as far as that goes. It's bad right now, but I might be.
Yeah, and of course.
A few people cover for me every once in a while. I don't take quite as many trips as some people, but.
Yeah, well, there, that was another point is obviously if you need to, if you can't make it, there's usually somebody on council that's willing to step in and sub for that, for that meeting. So, but again, that's a, you know, like I said, I recognize that as a heavy lift. So the other thing I want to do was, the reason I didn't really put this on the, on the consent agenda is because we needed to fill the position of the employee subcommittee. And, and part of the reason we, we need to, it's, that committee consists of the mayor, the vice mayor and an appointed person from the body and we didn't have a mayor until, a vice mayor rather, until we just voted Vice Mayor for Naxton. So at this time, and I'd just like to nominate, Councilmember Askin to be the third person on the employee subcommittee and then ask that we would just approve, approve those all as one slate. With that, I'll ask to nominate Councilmember Askin to be the third member of our employee subcommittee. Councilmember Dothet. Second, is there any objection to Ms. Askin being on our, the third member of our subcommittee? Seeing none, we'll plug that in and now then I'll ask that we can approve the whole, the committee commission nomination as a slate if I can entertain a motion for that. Vice Mayor, next then.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I move that we, we accept the mayor's nominations for council on aging airport commission, harbor commission, parks and recreation, planning and zoning, beautification and advisory subcommittee for.
Second.
Ask for unanimous.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion? You know, as consent was requested, is there any objection? Councilmember Beazin.
No objection. Do these take place immediately after, after this?
What was that?
Do these nominations take effect immediately?
Yes, yep. So if there's any questions about when your committee or commission's meeting, we've got these little handy calendars here where you can just check with the clerk too. And seeing no objection, then those nominations for liaison assignments are approved. And with that, I just wanted, I do this every year and I just wanted to reiterate the role of the liaison for your respective committee or commission. And bear in mind and please keep in mind that your role as a, as a liaison is, is to not participate in the deliberation of the body that you're liaison to. Your role is just specifically to be the conduit between the body, the committee or commission and, and, and the council. I found that, I know when I was a committee, a commission liaison, there were times that I would almost have the, the committee or commission look to me for guidance on things that I would very, be very careful not to, you want to make sure that they make their own decisions. They're advisory to our body. So it's important that we do not insert ourselves into that process of them coming up to the, with, with decisions that they're going to make. And, you know, sometimes like I said, it's, you know, they may even ask for or look to you for guidance. And I, again, I would stress that you, you know, refrain from, from doing that and actually explain to them exactly what, what your role is. Now, if it's a clarification issue that they want, certainly you as the liaison could bring that to the art, to the, to the council and then get clarification to report back to them. That would be appropriate, things along those lines. So again, please be cognizant of that. With that, we'll move on to item H ten, discussion action, which is virtual meeting participation, which was brought forward by the clerk, Ms. Thibodeau. Thibodeau, we've got, and there was a little memo in the packet regarding this issue. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So after the events that took place at the October nineteen, twenty twenty-three meeting, Shelley Center attended a virtual conference in response to find some solutions. And the solutions that she laid, that she found or laid out in the packet here, noting smaller cities have eliminated virtual, virtual participation by the public. Larger cities are keeping it. Virtual participants must sign up in advance. And then some have implemented a two-factor authentication process to further weed out some of the bots. And then there's webinars, which is currently in place right now. We upgraded that feature temporarily to, last week to test it out. This is going to be the second meeting I run with webinars. And so that's sort of a temporary solution at this time to give the clerks a little bit more control over audience participation remotely. And so what we're requesting is a motion. If you want to go ahead and keep webinars, we would need a motion to approve that because there is a budget. There's a, a cost associated with that, about a thousand dollars per year. And, and if you wanted to remain the way that we had before where it's just Zoom meetings, it would require no action.
So just a quick question, the webinars that we're doing temporarily right now, is that the platform you're using for planning and zoning and the, and committee commissions also?
That's correct, yes. So we're using it for planning and zoning. And then we also do have a couple upcoming commission meetings that are, that are done through webinars. So that would be the plan if it were approved by motion. All, all public meetings going forward would be using webinars.
Thank you. Councilmember Beazin.
Thank you. Can I make, I guess, a discussion or comment?
Yes.
Remind me, so we started this back during COVID correctly? So I mean, I get it whenever we're, you know, if you're dealing with large government, spread out like the borough and we've got Zoom, does the city need to continue doing this to where we're going to pay three thousand dollars a year to have this access to where, you know, we're twenty-nine, thirty square miles? Small city, people can come in here to this, this venue here and testify. We could still use Zoom for council members or guests that, that we have and limit to that. And that would get rid of this issue that we had. I don't, I don't think we need to spend more money on this. I think we need to spend less.
Vice Mayor Naxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I concur with, with that. And not, not only can people, because we have a small area, come in here. We, another thing that was a valuable tool was if people had some comments where they would, they would send the clerk an email or the council, whatever, and that would be inserted into our packet, which I think has value to everybody, not only council, but because it's a, it's a printed document that they're for something and why, and that was very, very useful. And, and I do believe that it has fallen off considerably, you know, on the, on the, on the Zoom. There's somebody there, but you know, certainly the cameras here are useful too for just listening and probably for any kind of recording that somebody may want, that's probably superior anyway. And I don't, I don't see, I, I see us going back to the, the way it was and it actually would be enhanced. Before, before COVID, we called in and we didn't. Wherever you are, we went through this system. You couldn't see anybody here, you know, all of that. It was, you know, but this, this does provide an avenue for, for council members or employees or whatever that need to, you know, call in. So I would be supportive of reverting back to what, what you were just describing. Beazin, thank you.
Councilmember Dothet.
I guess what's before us is the decision to go to webinars, not to completely go away with Zoom, correct?
If no action is taken at this time, we will revert back to what we were doing prior, which was we would still have open Zoom meetings open to the public, but it would be Zoom meetings, not Zoom webinars, which adds that extra layer of protection and has an extra cost. So if you wanted to do away with Zoom participation for the public entirely, that would be done by motion.
I just wanted to clarify, this is for the webinar and I'm assuming, so the webinar, the reason before the body right now is webinar adds extra security measures for the Zoom meetings. Is that the benefit, correct?
That's correct. Through webinars, members of the public who are attendees are only unable to unmute themselves when they've been recognized. We do that by asking them to raise their hand. Once I've raised their hand, I'm able to allow them to speak.
Thank you. And I agree that, you know, especially after the last meeting, it's great to have the opportunity to go heavier security. I do disagree with getting rid of Zoom. have a, the opportunity to go heavier security. Um, I do disagree with getting rid of Zoom completely. Uh, I think in this day and age, when we have a hot topic item, we have a lot of people calling in and testifying via Zoom. And I think it's an important tool, um, to keep up with the Joneses, so to speak. Zoom is a way of life nowadays. I do a lot of trainings via Zoom meetings. I have a lot of people calling in, uh, and it just seems for us to go away with it. I think we're just limiting, even if it just eliminates three or four people that might have only been able to come in to Zoom, maybe for mobility issues, or something that might want to make a comment. I think being able to reach out to the public and give the ability to have more participation if they couldn't make it in, what if they have bad roads, or their cars broke down. It gives them a way to, to participate in the meetings that night and, and, and do it via a, a web-based testifying that is common throughout everywhere nowadays. And I think just because we are a relatively small community doesn't mean that we can't keep up with allowing people to testify remotely and be able to log in. And I think, I do agree with keeping and going with the more security if we're going to do it. Um, it's a fairly low cost for higher security to upgrade basically to what we've already got and keep up with it. So as far as the webinars, I'm, I would definitely be a yes for continuing to use webinar.
Councilmember Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Um, just a question, might be two parts, for City Manager and the clerk. How much time do we have on the trial for webinars?
Ms. Thibodeau.
Thank you, Councilmember Daniel. Um, you know, I know that, uh, Shelley upgraded us, I believe, for a few months. If, if you want to give me a moment, I could probably look up and see the date of expiration of our current trial.
Thank you. And, and the reason why I ask that is, uh, if cost is the issue, uh, I agree with Councilmember Dalton, that we need to keep Zoom, and we do need to look at the security aspect of it. Uh, there's more than just Zoom as, as the only option. There's WebEx Teams, Slack, Discord, there's tons of them out there. And this is a question more for the City Manager, because I don't know if we, if the city is using only Zoom, or if we use something else. Uh, because there's plenty of options out there. And if, if the city's using something else, we could look at another option potentially, if that makes sense with what we have set up. But, uh, again, I don't want to overhaul what we have either, but it's a huge lift to do that. So, um, my thought process here is if we have time, we can also look potentially at our options. But if we have to make a decision today, I would definitely support the, the upgrade.
Ms. Bloom.
Thank you. So I, uh, we paid for a three-month subscription for webinars, so I'm not sure that a decision has to be made tonight. A budget for anything beyond the next three months, that, that's where we need a motion.
So just for clarification, what would be the, what's the fiscal note to, to extend, um, the webinars?
Um, so remember, uh, it says here, there would be an annual subscription increase of approximately 1,000 to the existing subscription amount of, uh, 1,999 for a total subscription amount of 2,999 per year.
Very good, thank you. Vice Mayor, next then.
Thank you. I do have a question. Um, in the webinars, um, there were, there's icy roads and people can't come in and that kind of stuff. They would be able to utilize that. But it does, it says in the memo, uh, from the clerk's office that, uh, comp, uh, passwords would be restricted until, they'd have, they'd have to sign up in advance. So that'd be before the meeting. How far before the meeting, do we have any idea? Would that be like the day before, or that morning, or that, you know, do we, have any idea how that might work? So?
Ms. Thibodeau.
Thank you, Councilmember Nexted. Um, I, I mean, the final decision would have to be from City Clerk Sainer, but I know that I staff the office until 5:00 PM. Um, and so I accept, um, I, if there's someone here, um, checking the, the City Clerk email, um, I don't see a reason why we couldn't have it up until 5:00 PM, the day of the meeting, um, to request access.
Ms. Bloom.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I've just been texting with our clerk. And so she says that she's paid for it for the next three months, and we don't need a motion to continue using webinars for the next three months. It's just beyond that. So you actually, if you wanted to think about things, uh, we could bring this back at the next meeting. Um, just wanted to make sure, I, I wasn't sure what the situation was, and just wanted to share what I learned.
Very good. Um, so I, the, the, is there a hand up? Because this is just a, uh, a discussion item, so is it? Who, who is it?
Um, I, I see we have a hand raised. Um, it's our Planning Director, Linda Mitchell.
Okay, yes, if it's staff, yes, definitely. Ms. Mitchell?
Right. Uh, and you can, at this time, you can unmute, uh, to be able to speak. Uh, Linda, if you are, um, if you join through the app, you just press the unmute button. If you join through the phone, you're going to press star six to unmute.
Ms. Mitchell, I don't know if you can hear me, but you're, uh, you're still muted?
Okay, Linda, I'm going to upgrade you to a panelist and see if that makes it any easier. Um, actually, it looks like, uh, Linda Mitchell has left the Zoom call, so I will let you know if she returns and raises her hand.
Okay, very good, thank you. Um, so if we don't have to make a decision, I guess where I'm, oh, I guess, I'm sorry. Um, Ms. Councilmember Sonar.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So I just want to make sure I understand what, um, how Zoom would function if we did not approve the extra money to proceed with webinars. But if we chose to just continue to use Zoom, it's not that we're doing away with Zoom. We would be keeping Zoom, obviously for any council member who was traveling, um, employees, directors, staff, everybody would have access through that Zoom meeting. It would just be the public that would not be able to come on live Zoom. However, we're still streaming, correct? And if the public is watching the streaming, do they have access to telephone in, to call in?
Ms. Thibodeau.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonar. Um, uh, at this time, no, uh, there's, if we were doing away with, uh, remote participation by the public, there wouldn't be an option to, to telephone in.
Um, if, if this isn't time sensitive, I guess what I would, because there, there is a memo here that came with this. I know, um, there was a discussion apparently through, uh, I think it was the Northwest, uh, Pacific Northwest where Alaska was included, I think with, um, Oregon, Washington, and some of those states to, to determine what they had done, um, regarding some of these, um, Zoom bombs and things like that. And in the memo, it does say that some of the smaller cities have eliminated virtual participation, and it kind of lists some other, um, sort of options beyond that. So I, I appreciate that, that was given to us by the clerk's office. I'm, I'm sort of in this, um, arena that I know we have other avenues for folks to participate by, um, you know, including comments that make it into our packet as a laydown. In other words, they can, um, email the clerk. I know there's a lot of times that I'll get an email from a, uh, constituents regarding, um, legislation that's before us. And generally in those cases, I will forward it to the clerk's office, and I have them, uh, include that as part of a laydown so it does become part of the record. And, uh, so, so there's that option there. I know there was an option for people that would like to be heard, which I kind of like this, is that they would have to be, um, sort of, uh, call in ahead of time and sort of get pre-approved to get on the list so they get a chance to be vetted. Um, I think we, I don't think we want to do away with Zoom completely for the reasons we've talked about, you know, remote participation by, you know, council staff or invited guests. You know, we have people that testify before us that are in Anchorage or, or beyond. Um, there's some value to that. Um, but, you know, as far as, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm still sort of on the fence with this. And I, I guess I wouldn't mind just having this as a, um, a chance for everybody to kind of digest a little bit more before, since it's not time sensitive, to, uh, look at, you know, legislation, either go back to pre-COVID, what we had there, or, um, uh, continue on with what we have, or change, uh, uh, platforms as, as Mr. Daniel had suggested. Uh, Ms. Bloom.
Thank you. I'd just like to add from a legal perspective, as you think about this more, um, I haven't found a policy that is successful. Like, a lot of municipalities have tried to define certain types of speech and say this type of speech is allowed and this type of speech is not allowed. I haven't found municipalities that have been successful with that. So I would recommend, uh, either you use webinars that we can control more, or some other platform that we can control more, or that you don't allow remote access, or you're okay, uh, living with what happened at the last meeting. Um, but I don't think it's something, I hate to use this example, but it's sort of like pornography. It's kind of impossible to define. And so when people try and define it through a policy, like what hate speech is, because we have to allow people to speak on topics, uh, to our, their local government. But hate speech is not a protected speech. That's something that we can shut down right away. But to define it is very difficult. Um, so I would just, if, if you're thinking about, uh, allowing, staying with Zoom, allowing remote public testimony, but having a policy that lets you decide, or the mayor decide when a speech has crossed the line and when to shut it down. Sometimes it can be very obvious, but a lot of times it's not. And so I, I would recommend it. From my perspective, I think it's going to be a struggle to come up with a written policy that defines what type of speech is allowed remotely or not.
I guess I would defer to this statement made during when our, our Congress, Congress was considering this, that, you know, I may not be able to, um, to describe it, but I know when I see it, I think is, uh, the term is. So, um, and clearly, I think the last example we had, our last meeting, was a clear example of what, um, was, uh, was effectively, um, inappropriate pretty quickly. So, I mean, I guess, would, would it be appropriate, I guess, for you, for, um, staff to just generate a, a memo ahead of a, a discussion action item that sort of outlines, um, some of these issues? Mr. Bloom?
Yeah, we can provide you with whatever you want. I'm not sure what you would be looking for more than what Shelley's already provided. I think, um, you know, if you want to take time, and we can bring it back if there's some, bring it back at the next meeting for further discussion as a, another discussion action item. Or if there's specific information you want that we can put together in a memo for you, we'd be happy to do that as well.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Dalton.
Um, I would like to, instead of the next meeting, if we postpone this to, what would be the 22nd? No, I'm looking at the wrong one, council meetings. Uh, 15th. But I'm just trying to find out when the next time, uh, the clerk would be, maybe it's the sixth when Shelley would, should be back. I wouldn't mind having Shelley here also to get her opinion on this, since she's kind of the, the ramrod behind getting the webinars. And we have that time. And then possibly in that time, we might be able to get some other options, um, presented to us. There might be other options as far as besides this webinar. And then we'll have used webinar a few times and see how it's going, since we just started using it and see how, I think just postponing a couple meetings till that first, and bringing it back maybe on that first meeting in December, that sixth, then we can maybe have an educated discussion about it and have a little bit more time to utilize what we've got.
I don't think we have a meeting on December 6th. I think that was the one that was canceled. So it'd be the second meeting in December, which would be December 20th, yep.
Forgot about that. I'll be there too. Um, but maybe, um, maybe the 20th meeting, then it gives time to work and use this footprint, or this platform for a little while and see, maybe there's other options, and gives time to research it a little more, since we have time to do this. So that still puts us by the first of the year to possibly change our policies.
Yes, Ms. Thibodeau, nodding yes. So I think that's, would be acceptable or is, or is that agreeable to everybody to, uh, maybe put this on a December 20th agenda? Councilmember, or Vice Mayor, next then.
Yeah, that's, that's agreeable. I think what's, would be important, since it's a, it's an important policy, I believe, you know, what we're doing, that, uh, everybody be available, including both our clerks. Not sure where everybody is with vacations and.
Unfortunately, I won't be here, but I think having the clerks both really available would be good, because they're the ones who utilize the program the most.
Very good. So December 20th, agenda item? Thank you. So that brings us to, uh, commission committee reports. First up, council on aging.
No report. There was no meeting.
Thank you. Uh, harbor commission?
Coming up.
Uh, oh, sorry, airport commission. It looks like I missed them.
Um, the next meeting is tonight.
Hey, Parks and Recreation Commission?
I have no report. Councilmember Sonar has a meeting tomorrow night. That's when we meet next. Thank you.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Uh, planning and zoning commission?
Oh, I missed the last planning and zoning meeting. Um, but I did get a talk to the director, and it doesn't sound like a whole lot happened.
Very good. Uh, beautification committee?
I guess that's me. Uh, January, January, so nothing to report right now.
Very good, thank you. Under, uh, report of the mayor, um, don't have a lot to report on here. Uh, but I would like to thank, um, Councilmember Abeson for his last year's service as the vice mayor. Um, I really enjoyed working with him. Um, always in a great mood every time I called him and got a chance to chat with him. It was always, uh, very productive, uh, conversation. Appreciated all the input, the positive input, uh, that we were able to, um, collaborate on. And certainly you did, um, an excellent job, um, representing the city, uh, in my absence. So I want to thank you for that. And then the last thing I wanted to say before we move on to, uh, administration reports is we have, uh, Veterans Day coming up, uh, November 11th, which is, uh, before our next meeting. So I ask everybody to, uh, you know, keep the, our veterans in, in mind. And, uh, is it fitting that we even, uh, the, the very next, uh, council meeting, uh, Councilmember Abeson has sponsored some legislation that, uh, sort of speaks to some of the, how, how we can, um, treat some, our veterans in this community. So thank you for that. And with that, we'll go to city manager reports. Um, Ms. Eubank.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, there have been some, um, concerns expressed by the public regarding some of our streetlights here in the city. So I, um, if council indulges me, I did ask Mr. Curtin if he would prepare a little report on, on the process this year and where we are with our street light repairs. And then I'll continue with the rest of my report.
Ms. Curtin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through City Manager Eubanks. Uh, so members of council, just to give you a kind of a rough update on, on what we've got. The city, we have 484 streetlights, uh, citywide. 271 of those are what we consider, um, city-maintained, uh, streetlights. These are common in, generally in the subdivisions that we have, like concrete curb and gutter. Um, the other lights are, are wooden pole lights that HEA, um, we pay a monthly fee to HEA, and, and they maintain, um, those lights for us. So, um, 484, uh, in total. Um, back in August, my wife and I took a drive at night, uh, late, and we, and we were mapping out, uh, all the lights that we came across. There was 50, 50 lights that were out, uh, within the city at that time, uh, which was very disheartening because it seems like many of these were in areas that have, you know, we've made repairs on in the past, and they continue to fail. on in the past and they continue to fail. And you're, I'm sure you're aware of the subdivisions, you know, Woodland subdivision, Inlet Woods has been a common one, Stellar, Fathom, you know, that section back in there is another one, just been ongoing issues with those. We do currently have a, we have an annual service contract that we do with an electrical contractor. That contractor provides utility locate services for all of our streetlights, so every time somebody calls in an 811 dig number, they actually go out, locate those facilities to keep them from getting hit, and then they also provide, you know, maintenance services. Long story short, much of our infrastructure is getting very old. It's getting very challenging to keep an operating order. We have, to date, as of yesterday, the update that I received was there were still 30 out, so 20 of those 50 had been repaired. Many of those were resolved with the replacement of new electrical service breakers. So, our subdivisions have an electrical panel that runs a string of lights, anywhere from five to maybe a dozen lights, depending on where they're at. As we've been replacing some of these bulbs with LED bulbs, those fixtures have not been playing well with our old-style breakers, and they've been tripping them. So, that's why you'll notice some of the subdivisions will have lights working for a few days, and then seven lights all go out at once, we, that's because it's tripping a breaker. Since then, we've replaced 13 breakers in all of those problem panels. That has brought back many lights. The 30, he was out actually today, so that number might be slightly less today. I wouldn't expect it to be a lot, but it might be down to 25, 24, or something like that. I have six new fixtures on order to replace fixtures that are either completely broken, removed, missing. We're going to have, several of those are going in Woodland Hills subdivision. It's Fifth and Ash is one intersection, Hemlock and Cedar, Maple and Reedout, Walnut and Reedout, our four locations, and then we have another issue with Fathom and South Gill. Are all going to be getting new fixtures that are on order. I've also ordered a dozen new LED retro kit bulbs to the tune of $1,800. Those six fixtures that I mentioned to you, total just under $14,000 for those replacement fixtures, and those are in process, so. And then I've got, HEA is assisting, some of these are the wooden pole lights, and I expect that those will be fixed here within the next week. They've actually been very helpful coordinating. So, I do, I think we're going to get that number down here relatively quickly to, you know, the low 20s. I don't think they're all going to be fixed, to be honest with you, until possibly the end of the year, by the time I actually have these all up and operating. Once they're all working, I still have some that have, they're going to be on during the day. We've got other photocell issues, so as we're getting them back online, we're discovering, we've got other quirks that we need to. I'll address those. My goal right now is just getting them, get them on, get them working, and then I'll fall back and we'll be adjusting those. I think long-term, I think we, I think we really need to start taking some steps to picking some of these subdivisions and just start moving forward with full replacements of the infrastructure. It's not an inexpensive, you know, endeavor. A lot of these lightheads are, you know, near $3,000 a fixture with a pole and all the other stuff you have to do, they could be as high as $10,000 a light to go through a subdivision and replace these. It adds up very quickly. But a lot of these areas are, you know, these were all built in the early 70s. I'm not sure, over the years, how many times those lights may have been worked on, but it's, you know, we're struggling keeping that aged infrastructure operational where we're at. So, I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns you guys have.
Any questions for Councilmember Daughtry?
Yeah, that was on my list, streetlights. Lo and behold, I was just telling Councilman Daniel, I said, wait and see, we're probably going to start seeing some streetlight questions coming up at the next meeting after we did the whole Halloween. And I just was like, yeah, there's a, I noticed quite a few out in the Inlet Woods subdivision, especially the back half. I don't know if it might have to do with some of the new construction. We've had a ton of new construction going on back there and up, but with that being said, there's a bunch of new construction going back on the backside of Inlet Woods, a lot of new houses and increased traffic, and some of them look like they might just be like dim or flickering out bulbs, might be a quick easy fix. I don't know, some of them are completely black. I know Inlet Woods is one of those pain in the butt subdivisions with the infrastructure back in the back there, but that was one of the concerns, is just that the back half of Inlet Woods is particularly bad right now with a lot of, large sections of lights out. But thank you for the work you're doing.
Councilmember Beeson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, I had a discussion with the city manager, and I'm glad you guys had this discussion. Not only with Halloween, I mean, we took probably a two-hour butt-wupin' on the radio over the situation. This is one of those things that the people in the city expect is going to work. It's a safety issue, they live in these areas, you know, we know winter's coming, we know these lights need to work. So, I guess what I'd ask from administration is that going forward, give us a plan that you need to fund these issues, whether it's three- to five-year plan to fix them, you know, more efficient, to where we don't have to mess with them, whatever it takes, and let us decide whether it's worth it or not. We need to hear that, because we're going to get beat up over it every year. And I appreciate that you're getting them back in line right now, that's what's needed, but, you know, this is nothing new. We know this.
I would like to, I agree with you fully, and I'm not looking to do Band-Aids, I'd like to do permanent resolutions here, so we're not revisiting these things annually. We have had a project on our capital plan that has been moving up. I think currently where it resides, I think we're, it's tracking for a design next year and construction implementation the following year, and I think in light of where we're at, we need to consider moving that priority up and likely increasing some of the money that we have budgeted. I want to say it was $90,000 for design, and maybe $400,000, $500,000 for construction is what's been moving forward the last several years within the capital plan. So, you will see more of that coming as we get into the budget cycle.
Further questions, Mr. Curtin? Thank you. Ms. Eubank?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, council members. We are in the process of formulating the FY 29, 25 through 29 capital plan, that's the city's five-year capital plan. Currently, different members of staff are taking those plans, last year's plans, to commissions and committees and having discussions about what was on last year's plan, any new projects that commissions and committees would like to see brought forward. And based upon those discussions, that will come back to the administration and we will formulate the plan and we'll have that to council. We're hoping, we're targeting to get that to council for discussion and approval in December or early January, which allows us to submit those projects to the state for funding through CAPSIS and also engage with our federal congressional delegation, looking for some federal help on some of these projects. So, we are in the process of that. I think it's interesting, I've been approached and I'm likely to have an intern for, starting in January, she may start a little bit before then. She's working on her master's in public administration, and she has to do some practical work, and approached me about doing an internship in my office, so I'm looking forward to working through that. I think it also gets us exposure to potential people that may want to work at the city someday, so I'm looking forward to that. Our new airport manager will be here on the 13th, so that's a week from Monday. We're looking forward to welcoming him. Give you a little bit of an update on one of the big projects the administration is undertaking this year, which is our classification and compensation study. We have engaged a consultant, they start work this week on that classification plan, and the compensation study is being handled in-house. We were unable, we went to RFP, we're unable to identify any vendors to do that work, so Ms. Randall, working with Ms. Cunningham in my office, have undertaken that internally. I honestly think we're going to get a better product doing it this way, but it's going to be a heavy lift by those individuals. Key, another project, just to keep council in the loop on, the Wildwood Drive situation. I am meeting this Friday with some representative or representative from KNA to talk about that project and a plan for the upcoming legislative sessions and how we'd like to attack that. I will share with you that DOT placed two traffic counters on that road this summer. One was about halfway down, and the other one was right at the entrance going into the prison. And lo and behold, 80% of the traffic that is on that road in a one-week period was related to the prison. So, I think this gives us some really good data to use in Juneau, and talking with our legislative folks that are heading down there, that supports the fact that, you know, Wildwood Pretrial is a facility that is outside the city limits of the city of Kenai. It's accessed by a road that is inside the city of Kenai, but 80% of the traffic is related to that prison, and I think the state has a responsibility to assist us in repaving that road. I also wanted to share with council, I know I discussed this last year during the budget, in order to get it in place and be effective for the 2024 tax year, I do plan to bring legislation, introduce legislation at the next meeting that will exempt the first $100,000 of business personal property for businesses in the city of Kenai. It's consistent with a taxing policy that's employed at the borough and other municipalities in the city, and I do plan to bring that forward. So, I just wanted to put that on your radar, and other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions of the city manager? Say none, we'll go to the city attorney, Mr. Blum. Thank you, Ms. Eubank.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Members of council, I don't have anything to report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions of the city attorney? Say none, and before we go to the city clerk, just want to say, do a shout-out to Mary Bonn Rat for filling in for the little hole we had at the airport, till we got that position filled. With that, we'll go to the city clerk, Ms. Tebado.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. At this time, I have nothing to report, but I'm available for questions.
Any questions, the city clerk? Vice Mayor, next.
Thank you. I was going to mention this at the comments and questions, but it's probably appropriate now. We did get an email from the city clerk, and today we got a commission and committee engagement survey that came to us also with some requests on, you know, what we're going to do with that when we go to our commissions and committees, and I was wondering if you might want to give us an overview on what we should do and how we should go about it, since it just came in today.
Thank you, Councilmember Naxton. So, I did help prepare some of the survey questions. I was not actually included on that email. I did not know that that went out today, that the city clerk sent that out, but it was scheduled to go out November 1st. And so, it's a survey regarding the roles and responsibilities to kind of gauge our commissioners on their thoughts on that. Hopefully, we'll be collecting some great data. There's a 30-day period that they can submit that by, so we would definitely encourage all liaisons when you go to your commission meetings, and I believe every commission meeting, or every commission has a meeting this month, so as liaisons, if you would just encourage all members to check that survey, to go ahead and fill that out, it'll be really, really helpful when we go through the next phase of our commission consecutive review process.
Thank you. Any further questions, the city clerk? Say none, we'll go to the general public. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to address the council at this time? Somebody online?
If there's anyone that would like to speak online, please raise your hand to unmute yourself. If you joined through the app, please raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button, and if you joined through the phone, please press star nine to raise your hand.
Say none in chambers or online, we'll go to council comments, and is Councilmember Askin still on board?
Councilmember Askin did have to leave early, but she did want me to relay, she'd like to say, like to thank Vice Mayor Beeson for his excellent service, and congrats to our new Vice Mayor, Naxton.
Thank you. Next up, we'll go to, sorry, that, Councilmember Daughtry?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, thanks for all the work on the streetlights. I know, I would definitely encourage to try to make a big plan for this. It's one of those thorns right up there with snow removal and all of that, that we hear about every year, so maybe putting it to the people might be a good idea to say, hey, it's going to cost us this much, is that something you want to invest in? And say, we have a plan, and this is what it's going to cost, let them know that it's not free, basically. It's going to be a substantial amount of money to get it up and running, but having that future plan would be great, I think. And then, I guess it would be for Public Works, do we have any lock fill in our seasonal operator position yet that we had posted?
Mr. Curtin?
Through the mayor, Councilman Daughtry. We have received applications. Kurt, I believe, has been in contact with two, I think, to set up for interviews. We haven't made any offers yet, so I'm not sure what the result of that is. We've also reached out and contacted two applicants for the shop mechanic position that is also open in Public Works, and we're in the process of arranging interviews with those folks.
Thank you for that update. I was curious, I know snow is in the forecast shortly, it sounds like, so it'd be good to hopefully get those filled. And then, I would definitely, I know I mentioned it last time, the seasonal positions for Public Works, I really hope we can have that presented to us maybe in this next upcoming budget session, and then I'd like to also see possibility of maybe making that temporary position a full-time, year-round position until that position again, but other than that, those are just a couple of things on my mind, and, you know, P&amp;Z goes next week, so, thank you.
Thank you. Still, Representative Tanner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I'll start off with Connections. On November 1st, there's an owl pellet dissection at the Wildlife Refuge for Younger Students. On November 2nd, there's going to be a Science of Reading meeting, which is the first of a five-part series, and I will be addressing the Alaska Reads Act and the Early Reading Interventions. On November 3rd, there's going to be a hay maze at Solid Rock. On November 7th, there'll be picture retakes at the Connections office in Saldana. On November 18th, students will be participating in the AMC 10A and 12A at the Saldana Prep School. November 11th through 12th, the Student Council will be running a bake sale at the Sterling Senior Center to fund the purchase of perishable items in the Thanksgiving food drive baskets. Through, October 31st through November 15th is our Thanksgiving food drive, and there will be a box at the Connections office and several around the community. Starting this month, there will also be designated a homeschool swim at most pools on the peninsula each week, using a Connection swim pass, so that's pretty exciting for our students. For Kenai Alternative High School, on November 6th, they'll be welcoming five new students. They will also be introducing a culinary arts class at that time, which will provide students with the opportunity to participate in a CTE course that has not been traditionally offered during the normal school schedule. On November 11th, the school council will be meeting with students and promoting the Community Scholarship Fair that will be held at the Kenai Visitor Center on the 11th. November 15th, there will be the annual Thanksgiving dinner in the gym, where students will cook and serve food as a way to express gratitude towards parents and community members who support them. November 16th, Kenai Alternative High School will be partnering with Emily Alvey, the KPBSD Recidivism Program, and other local organizations to host a community event that focuses on adverse childhood experiences and parent resiliency. It will include a spaghetti feed, a presentation, and a panel of speakers. Throughout the month of November, one of of speakers. Um, throughout the month of November, uh, one of the Kenai Alternative High School staff will lead students through a Giving Thanks, um, Sources of Strength activity and their final project will be posted at the front entrance. For Kenai Central High School, I would like to note that these dates all come from what I was able to gather based off of, um, schedules that I was given. Um, but I was told that these dates could change, um, due to weather or any kind of planning issues. Um, November second through fourth should be the volleyball Region Three tournament. On November third, there will be the co-ed junior varsity and varsity hockey at Homer High School. Um, November sixth, junior varsity co-ed hockey tournament versus Sohigh. November seventh, varsity co-ed wrestling match versus Sohigh. November seventh, junior varsity and varsity co-ed hockey Stars and Stripes tournament. Um, November tenth through eleventh will be the co-ed varsity wrestling, um, at Homer High School. November thirteenth is eligibility check for Kenai Central High School students. Some, uh, important dates that could affect students from any of these schools is, uh, November third through fourth, the twenty-twenty-three Alaska Swim and Dive State Championships at the Diamond Park Aquatic Center in Juno. And November ninth through eleventh, which will be the two thousand twenty-three Alaska three A and four A volleyball state championships at the Alaska Airlines Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. Councilmember Sonard?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, and I have to follow that report. Um, Mr. Curtin, thank you for all the work that you've done, um, trying to maintain the streetlights and for all the work that you're going to do to put together a, a replacement plan. Also, I know that we have purchased and received a new piece of equipment for snow removal, some kind of arm extension that I saw the picture of, um, this past year. And I'm looking forward to hearing how you like it and how it works, although I really hope that report is further off in the future. So, it doesn't have to be an immediate report next week, next time. And then last night, I popped into the Senior Center to just take a gander at the Halloween festivities there. And it was fun to see all the tables set up and decorated with the seniors there and, and the candy and, um, just community members coming in and out and all dressed up and trick-or-treating at the tables. And there was, um, one of our former librarians had set up a table in the back and, um, the Little Business Over here, the Already Read Bookstore, had donated children's books and they were laid on the table. So, the kids could come by and instead of getting sugary calories, they could pick up an already-used kid's book and just take it with them and go. And I thought that was pretty cool. So, kudos to the Senior Center for what they did for the community last night. And, um, that's all I've got. I wish everybody, um, continued happy fall.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniel?
Oh, thank you, Ma'am, Mayor Gabriel. Man, all these reports are so awesome. And I'm just gonna say, I'm happy to be here. And I survived my first meeting. It was a little more exciting than I wanted it to be. And I was gonna, I came in with the notion of just gonna come in, take it all in, not gonna say a whole lot. I said, way more than I thought I would, but we got through it. And, uh, no, I'm, I'm really looking forward to it. And, so I share a little story. I, uh, was out trick-or-treating with the kids yesterday in Inlet Woods, uh, as, uh, Councilmember Dothet was alluding to, and got stopped by a few people mentioning the streetlights. So, thank you, Mr. Curtin, for addressing that with you and your crew and, and the contractor. That's gonna be a huge win. People are really looking forward to that. I appreciate it. We, we appreciate it, I should say. Uh, people are really looking forward to it. So, yeah, um, definitely looking forward to working with everyone up here in council and city staff and happy to be here.
Thank you. Councilmember Bazin?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. There is a reason why they put you next to me.
I'm worried about that.
So, uh, uh, good meeting. Uh, thanks for working on these streetlights. Um, I know we'll get a, we'll get a good solution. Uh, congratulations to our new Vice Mayor. Thanks for taking that on. Uh, just remember, brevity.
Thank you. Councilmember next, or Vice Mayor next?
Yeah, but I'll, I'll try. But I, I'll, first off, I wanted to say, I really appreciate, uh, Councilmember Bazin, Vice Mayor Bazin, over the last year. Um, you did a very great, good job. Um, I think you represented the city very, very well. So, thank you for, for your service and that. And I wanna thank, uh, council for your, uh, for your support of me, uh, uh, as Vice Mayor for the, this, this next year. And I'll, uh, I'll do my best. Um, and then I don't have anything to say about streetlights. You'll, we'll take care of those. But what I would like to say is, one of the projects that I, I think was probably the, really the worst street was North Willow Street. That will, that street would be underwater, no ditch. It was a mess. It was completely flooded. You, you get in and out. Um, we talk about another street in particular, but people come and go all the time on that. But Willow Street was one of those projects that was completed this year and it's very nice. It's, uh, actually, the contractor did a very good job on the paving. It's one of the better paving jobs that I've seen recently, actually, you know, just around. It's, the, the quality was very good. And, uh, I think that, that, that you should, you should be proud and I'm proud of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. In fact, I, I actually just got an invoice saying I don't have file numbers, but we are under budget.
Excellent. That's even better.
That's good, very good. And it's a good, it's a good note to, uh, good note to end on. So, see no other pending items or, uh, executive session for us and no other business for this body we are adjourned.